The meeting of the Somerville Planning Board for April 23rd, 2025 will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting, as required by the Open Public Meeting Act, has been provided, a copy, has been provided, a copy of the notice specifying the date, time, and location, was one, published to the Courier-News, two, posted on the bulletin board outside of Borough Hall, three, posted to the municipal website, and four, given to the Clerk Administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of the Board that the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call.
Andrea Dare.
Here.
Chris Addicks.
Here.
Art Aikens is excused. Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Jason Kraska.
Here.
John Manilio.
Here.
Barry Van Horn.
Here.
Mayor Gallagher.
Here.
Councilmember Vroom.
Here.
Chairperson Warner.
Here. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I need a motion for approval for minutes from April 9th.
So moved.
Second.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. Okay, we will be moving on to our hearing for final approval for Avalon dated, or you have a letter from CHA, our planner, dated April 22nd, that all the preliminary, the hearing that we had for preliminary approval, everything has been met, so moving on to final.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Anthony Reci, you're Donal Howard and in CSL on behalf of the applicant. As the Board may recall, we last appeared on April 9th before you at the conclusion of what the Board moved for granting preliminary approval for the application, subject to final approval being carried to this evening. As evidenced in CHA's letter, you know, they were satisfied with the revisions on the plan and the narratives that our professionals provided, and any additional comments that, that were addressed at the hearing will be addressed during resolution compliance, and your solicitor and our office have worked tirelessly to get the resolutions before you this evening, and unless there's any questions that the Board may have, we ask that the Board move to grant final approval for this application this evening.
Any questions from the Board?
Can I, Chair, the only thing I will say is let's mark as PB1.
Can you turn your microphone on?
Let's mark as PB1, CHA, Mr. Barinski's letter of April 22nd, 2025, which as Council indicated acknowledges that the plan revisions have complied with all necessary plan revisions requested by his office with regard to preliminary approval.
Okay. Any other comments from the Board? All right, I will open it up to the public for any comments and/or questions. Okay, hearing none. A motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
John Manilio.
This is preliminary or final, or?
Final.
This is the vote on the final.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna move right on to our resolutions for, we have the first for preliminary carried. Do you want to go over anything?
Uh, yes, so this resolution is for the preliminary approval, site plan approval with regard to Phase Two, preliminary, amended preliminary approval with regard to Phase One concerning the signage, and also approval of an exception deviation from the signage requirements relative to Phase Two, because there were two wall signs that were requested as opposed to one. I did go through this with Council and our consultant, and there were some minor typographical changes. The only thing of any substance would be on page 21, item number 18, should now read, as opposed to the size of two parking spaces, it reads the size of 32 parking spaces, as indicated on the revised drawings, will be reduced to 8.5 as opposed to 8.6 by 18. It's the only substantive change, everything else was minor, and we can go ahead and get a motion and a second on the approval of the resolution itself. And this would be, I have outlined, Ryan, in the resolution, who is permitted to vote on this that was here at the preliminary application hearings.
We have a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Uh, Larry can't.
Larry can't.
Oh, because he voted no.
Well, he actually abstained.
Abstained. What does that mean?
You didn't vote.
I didn't vote.
Yeah.
Well, we'll go through that a little later, because I want to make sure everybody does understand that, but let's finish this up, and then I'll make a little comment later on.
You have a yes from me, though, Ryan.
Jason Kraska. Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. All right, so resolution for final.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, just let me make sure that, I'm just going to amend it to reflect that there were no additional exhibits other than the exhibit marked as PB1. There was no additional testimony, and there were no comments or questions from the public. So the motion was made by Mayor and?
No, motion made by Jason, seconded by?
Got it.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Am I eligible or not?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, this is final, because this is, you voted yes on final.
Just making sure. All right, I misunderstood, but okay, yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. Okay, up next, we have a presentation from the Environmental Commission on the list of the approved street trees. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeff Lamborn, current Commissioner, former Chair of the Environmental Commission here in Somerville. With me is Tim Marie Deal, current Chair of the Environmental Commission. I want to say thank you for taking the time to talk with us about the street trees that we have here in town. What I do want to hand out to everybody, and I guess, Ryan, I may ask you, did you receive my email about a presentation?
Yeah, I did. I can actually put it on.
Are you able to put it up?
Yeah.
Thanks. That would be helpful. What I am gonna hand out to everybody is a, the list of street trees that we recommend.
Is that, this list? Oh, okay, no, hand that out, just in case.
Yeah, that is the same one.
Okay. Yeah, I think it is the same.
Tim Marie, T-I-M-A-R-I-E, Deal, D-I-B-H. Thank you. Two tough ones.
Thanks. While that works its way around, I'm gonna keep this to under 15 minutes at the request of the Board here. Tim Marie and I will both talk with regards to what the street trees are here in town. We'll focus a bit of our efforts on the downtown area in particular, but we also want to include residential areas here in town separate from that. So to begin, the Environmental Commission has a mission statement that we put up here, educate, advocate, and promote best policies and practices for the borough's environments, the health and safety of its residents. And Larry hopefully has given some feedback to people here on what we, what we do, and he's been on the Board. I thought I was there for a long time, getting on six years now, but Larry has me by triple that, I'm sure, at this point, so.
They know who I am.
Yeah.
And they know why I'm here.
And he advocates very well for that. Yeah.
Thank you very much, thank you.
We appreciate that. So to talk about, this is a subject, I'm sure, that's been talked about many times before. What, what is changing in this and what we're proposing here is kind of a bringing together of subject matter experts that Tim Marie will go into a little bit later, but in particular, we did another one of our Main Street Tree Walks. A handful of you have been on that walk before, and what we did is review the inventory that we most recently had. We consider Main Street to be from about Borough Hall, where that, I forget the name of the intersection there, but where it forks into 28, and then works its way east towards Firehouse Engine Number One by the bridge that crosses over Peters Brook. So that's about 85 trees stretching over that three-quarter length of a distance there. And we, we have a good inventory, but it's a bit old of what's there. So it's listed in the bullet points to talk about, the age and, and what kinds of trees are there. Part of what we are coming here today to do is to talk, and the list of the first eight that are on, on the list there are ones that we think are better, most appropriate for downtown. Two of those, two of those particular species, the Honey Locust and the Asian Zelkova, which cover about 90% of what downtown consists of, are continuing to be on our list. We think those are great trees for what they offer, but we think there's an additional six that would be better to include for those ones. The, let's see, I think, as you go through Main Street, you can tell what areas would better suit a particular tree, based on size, overhead wires, et cetera, underground utilities, and, and what we, what we want to do more than just present a list of trees is to let you know that with the subject matter experts we have created and are creating a construction best practices list for how to actually put these trees into downtown, it's not so much just plant a tree and hope it grows. There's a lot that goes into street trees, so the best one that we have that Mayor Gallagher met, and Larry, and I think maybe a couple others have met, is an urban street tree expert by the name of Paul Cowie. He has been working in the state for many years, including in Manhattan. They respect him for what he does over there. So I think his expertise has really played a lot into what we think can make the trees that we do have better than what they are, as well as improving what we can do here going forward. So to give you a list, an idea of what recent assessments we've had here in town, I mean, this runs the gamut here with Michael Cole helping this 10 years ago, 11 years ago at this point, and working its way through the years. We've had LTE is a designation for a licensed tree expert. That's a New Jersey certification, and those, those people in particular are ones that put their license on the line for what they do, so we really trust what they come and say for a lot of those. This list was done, the most recent one, I guess this was 2018. So there, there certainly are some updates to it and some trees that have been removed, but it's a good start for what's there. Go ahead for the next one. Thanks. So as, as you have in front of you is a slide that separates what we've color-coded downtown. There's eight trees that are listed there, and below it are trees that we believe are good for residential, better for residential, because they don't think that they could match up to what a street tree, especially on downtown, could accomplish. Those first two bullet points in particular are ones that I'm gonna emphasize here. Street trees are bred, these are not ones that you just find in the wild, they're bred for toughened urban environments. A lot of things such as root area, the pot, the pollution, the salt that comes through winter, the soil conditions, which are typically very fill type of conditions, where you've got a lot of rocks and everything else that doesn't make a tree a wonderful place to call home, but they tend to find a way. And then, and avoidance of monoculture, which is having a diversity of these species, it helps in case there is disease or pest impacts. I'll give Tim Marie a chance here to talk about more details, since she is, I don't want to call her a subject matter expert, but within our commission, she's our subject matter expert on what these trees are.
Yes, I have a background in botany, but I am by no means on the level of the licensed tree experts, but yeah, I love, I love trees. So what you see on the, the right there is the list that we have curated, and on the left are the, really the attributes that are important for street trees, so they're really hardy trees. And bullet point number three, ideally, they would have very few, you know, droppings, you know, types of fruits that kind of fall down. Most of our, all of our street trees that we're suggesting for downtown are deciduous, meaning that they will lose their leaves in the winter, but that's, that's standard. So we tried to curate a list that minimizes the droppings as much as possible. And then also, like Jeff mentioned, the root growth and being able to, you know, overcome some of the adversity of living in an urban environment. And then, you know, also, we wanted to provide a diversity of both structure, like how the tree looks, and, and, you know, how it grows, and, you know, the, the color in the fall, and, you know, we tried to give a little bit of a range to, to add some interest to downtown. You know, as, as Jeff mentioned, a lot of what we have is, is one or two, or, you know, up to, you know, I think we had like four, four main species in the, the previous slide, so we wanted to provide a little bit more diversity there and be able to find the right tree from our list for the given space that's needed for the different developments that are happening downtown. And just a quick note, we're gonna be focusing on the downtown street tree list for the rest of the slides, but the residential street trees, we also wanted to just quickly note that almost all of these trees are already found somewhere in town as a residential street tree. We just wanted to make it more of like an official, an official palette for, for what people can choose for, for their residential street trees and for what we can, we can kind of place throughout town. So all of those are native trees, and then a few of the downtown trees are not native, but they're, they're not invasive, so that, you know, we're, we're working with the, the ecology of the area. So we wanted to provide you with a summary of the downtown trees to kind of give you an idea of the, you know, breadth of the size and shape that we're, we're suggesting here. So we wanted to provide, you know, for some of the more open spaces, these bigger trees that you see in the top left, and then some kind of tall and skinny trees, which would be needed for different areas, and then on the bottom, an array of kind of the shorter trees, which would be good, you know, kind of throughout, but also provide enough shade. One of the things that we've noticed about a lot of the recent plantings from different developments is that they are choosing, they're choosing species that, that don't provide enough shade, and that's kind of a detriment to, especially in the summertime, to our urban environment and the, you know, urban heat island effects of all the concrete creating all the heat. The shade just helps to kind of counteract that. So, so yeah, so that's just a kind of a summary showing the, the breadth. And then you can see the four with the green dots, those are fully native, and then the one with the yellow dot on the top row there, that one is, it's a native tree, the sweetgum is a native tree, but it's a, it's a cultivar, so just wanted to call that out. So all of these slides go in-depth into each of the trees. I don't think we need to go quite that deep right now. We'll be providing this to you guys for, for nighttime reading later, but yeah, so the white oak is a classic majestic tree, really long-lived, which is, which is beneficial for the urban environment with a broad canopy, and oaks are really, really important for the ecology of our town. So that's that one. The Sterling Linden, again, it's really hardy tree, very neat and, and symmetrical. You can see its beautiful fall foliage and the two-toned leaves in that, that bottom-left photo, and it kind of makes a beautiful shimmer in the breeze. The columnar sweetgum, so this one, it grows really tall and thinly, and yeah, just kind of a cool, different shape and a beautiful fall color as well, so for, for some of the tight spaces that we might need. The Zelkova is a really common street tree all across New Jersey. I think we've had 30% of our current street tree list, or, you know.
Inventory.
Yeah, inventory, thank you. Already is the Zelkova. We think it's a great tree. It's not native, but it has many other benefits, and, you know, specifically the kind of vase-like shape is, is a good option, especially for pedestrian areas. Our Honey Locust, which we have all throughout town, we love this tree, and I, I think it's a perfect street tree, very hardy, and, you know, kind of, we know it, we love it, it's already here. We should continue to, to propagate that and plant it here. And then the Amor Macia, also very hardy, that's a through-line, upright tree, sort of vase-like again, and does really well in the poor soils, and has, has kind of pretty flowers. They're, they're slight, but, but they're pretty anyway. And then our two smallest options are the American Hop Hornbeam, and then the next tree, but this is a very small tree that is resistant to pets and, or pests, and tolerant of drought, and, you know, good, well-resistant for ice and snow damage. And then our last one is the American Hornbeam, which is just a, a kind of cute, small tree. Actually, I believe we may have some of these outside of, I, I see that photo there, it looks like it's outside of a, some sort of state building. I think we have some on our lawn in front of the.
Courthouse.
In front of the courthouse, yeah, thank you. So, yeah, so that kind of does it for the actual trees. I don't know if.
Yeah, we, I guess we could take some questions. Are the slides remaining, we're gonna talk about what the current conditions downtown are, and the short and long-term plans that we presented to Council, to talk about what we think is the best way going forward over the next year, five years, and even 10 years. Trees last a long time, so, and it's a, it's expensive proposition to install a new tree downtown. The estimates are tens of thousands of dollars to replace, remove and replace. I mean, that's not small change, so how best to do this is as we continue to go forward. But for the moment here, I want to give people a chance before I jump into some more of those plans. Any questions from the, from the Board thus far?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, thank you. Larry and I started this 10 or 11, 12 years ago, and we thought we had a plan back, we did have a plan back then, but, but it, it didn't happen. And then I guess it happened again in 19 or 20, and then it didn't happen again. So I'm really hoping that this time, it's gonna happen.
Third time's the charm.
Yeah, that's what, that's what we're hoping, and it's just getting more expensive. Obviously, we have, we have some great hazard issues. We did a big walk-around, and I think everybody saw, you know, I, I think there was a balance of understanding the safety considerations versus wanting to maintain as many of the existing trees as we can for as long as we can, because the tree canopy we have, it, it took 40 years to get here. And the tree canopy is one of the alluring things of our downtown. So in our walk-around, what I had said to everybody was moving it forward over the next 30 or 40 years. We want to create or recreate that canopy, but, but make it even more beautiful, so that actually the tree canopy then becomes a destination as well during different times of the year, different colors, different blooms, different, which I think is a, a great attraction. It really is. One of the things I would like to see, well, you, you did a great job in, in showing the trees. So is there a pattern to the, what I'm concerned about is a pattern to the planting. I, what I don't want to see is haphazard planting, that, oh, this one will fit here, and then this one will fit here, and then you've got this very staggered, awkward tree scape. And my feeling, my thought is, you've taken it to this step, take it to the next step, and, and take those 85 locations. We know we're not gonna plant them all in the next five, 10 years, over the next 20 years, probably. And, and let's articulate what trees go where now, so there is no question, so that it's done, and it moves forward. And then during the course of plantings, if we see a tree that doesn't work, or doesn't fit, or nobody likes, then you can kind of adjust that plan. But, but I think, rather than having the argument of what tree goes in front of what piece of property at what time, let's set it. Set it and forget it. I think, I think that makes a lot more sense.
Yes, it does.
Larry?
Well, there's a point to that, but I think that the idea of species diversity, you guys hold it something else, monoculture.
Monoculture, yeah, yeah.
That's kind of holds things back, because if you're trying to preserve what you have, and something happens to that tree, yes, we should have something planned for that spot.
That's correct.
But it doesn't have to be, because, oh, it's shorter or taller than the one next to it, because that keeps an interest, and also, if there's any kind of blight on existing trees, we don't lose all those.
Well, I agree. So.
We don't lose anything in one spot.
I agree. So it's taking the trees we have and articulating what that pattern, that tree pattern will be, architecturally, if that's, is that the right word?
That's the word I wrote down, so.
Then it's the right word. But that, I, I agree, but if we, if we figure that out ahead of time, it may look awkward for a couple of years until another tree is replaced next to it, in front of it and behind it, and that's when it'll start to fill in. It's, you know, I don't know anybody else's thoughts.
No, I think that the most guessing, or the best amount, most amount of guessing we can take out, I guess is what I'm trying to say, at the time of needing it, is the better, because I think that's why we keep getting to a point, and then we don't ever get over that finish line, is because that's where we get hung up on, well, what should go where? So the more that we can do that in advance, I think it's half, not half the battle, I think it's 90% of the battle.
Yeah, because again, if we have a document that we can point to in the future, that says, nope, that's one that goes there, whoever may be responsible for doing it, can't just say, well, I want to put this, uh, really, the American Hornbeam, because that probably is the cheapest, because it's the smallest, rather than the white oak, which might be more expensive. If we have a document to stand behind, that goes there.
That's adopted by the planning Board.
Yeah.
Now, you've got something with teeth in it. This is, so, so even then, when there's applications, we know ahead of time.
What they'll have to.
What tree they have to put in. So there's no dialogue, you know, the planner's not gonna have an offline conversation, it's, they're gonna say, well, we want to put in the three-caliper, and, and we're saying we want the five-inch caliper. We can set that now.
Okay.
So that, so that in the future, if a developer comes in, you know, it's going to be a five-inch caliper, it's going to be the white oak.
Yeah.
And, and it's going to have this planting structure underneath it.
Yeah.
Because I think that's a part of it now as well, because we have to figure that out.
Okay. No, that's good. I'm happy to hear that you guys are thinking ahead, so.
Yeah, the other thing that I, I would recommend is the root ball structure. There's utilities all through Main Street, and the root ball structure on these, some of these trees is dramatically different. Some go down, some go out, and in the past, I've used the Cornell engineered soil to help with the root ball structure to give it somewhere to grow, but I think they should, the list and the sequence, Mayor, that you're talking about should address the subsurface conditions.
Yeah.
Because not all these trees have the same root.
Yeah.
Configuration. Some are not gonna be suitable, they're two feet away from a gas main.
Right.
And we've run into a lot, a lot, and the engineered soil from the Cornell, that was the CU stuff, it's just been there to, for moisture and to provide the roots an area to grow, so they don't keep heaving up, from the photographs you've seen.
Yeah.
You get to heave, and then we have the tripping hazards. So I, I think this is a great list, but I think the next step would be the root structure and the subsurface conditions, to make sure that the, the trees are suitable for the existing subsurface conditions.
Yeah.
We've learned a handful of good tips from our tree experts about.
Yeah.
How to make, how to make the roots do what you want them to do.
Yeah.
In a way, but at the same time, you can't control it all. It's gonna do things like bust open through the top, and you're gonna have broken pavers, you're gonna potentially risk your utilities, so that's something certainly to consider, yeah.
Yeah. Yes, please.
Yeah, those are expensive.
Yeah, I think that this is, you know, a good kind of first step to get everybody on the same page in terms of what trees we're, we're suggesting, and then, yeah, I think the next natural step would be to put together a, a more comprehensive plan. I think that getting Paul Cowie looped back in, and, you know, maybe Mr. Cole for, for some of the utilities piece, and whoever else wants to be, or should be involved in that. But yeah, definitely more planning to, to come, but.
Okay.
Yeah, and then the only other, well, two comments. One, the, I'm a little concerned about the very columnar tree, that it's not, it doesn't have enough.
Spread to it.
Yeah, it's, that, you know, and it may work in some locations, but it may not fit for the canopy flow. And we also have to understand that the canopy really is primarily over Main Street, that it's, it is going to be pruned on the sidewalk side, because we can't have it going into the buildings, they can't have scraping on the buildings.
Sure, sure, sure.
So.
Okay, no, that's good. Certainly, in my mind, these do well on narrow streets, maybe Division, if it once was a, no longer pedestrian walkway, might fit the bill in those spots, but yeah, there's certainly some ones that may fit this, so, good call. I'll, and how are we doing on time, Ryan?
We're probably, we're probably over. You're okay if you want to finish up, yeah.
All right, we'll do a quick talk about maybe the, the plan that we had, had put forward here, and we'll finish with that for the time being. Is that suitable for the Board?
Yes.
Okay. The, what, what we do have next is kind of listed here. I think this ties into what the current conditions are downtown. Heaving pavers are certainly one thing that falls in there. That's a conversation that has perpetuated, and we don't have, it's not something we wanted to talk about necessarily today. But the tree replacement construction specifications, I think, are something that are important to include in, in the same lines of what tree fits best, or trees fit best in what locale, and ensure that the planning Board in particular is considering what trees are being presented from development in town, and ones that may, may or may not fit. The Environmental Commission, we'd like to, us to be considered a resource, continue to go through Larry, or whatever representative is on our spot. We'd love to hear from more of that. Larry does a good job of the community. to hear from him more of that. Larry does a good job of communicating. So I think, uh, the last part I'll talk.
So to that end, um, the, the, the planting structure. So I, and I think, I was up in Montreal a couple of months ago and I think I sent, did I send it to you?
Yeah, you sent a good text for what the grates look like on the street.
Yeah, the, the very large grates and then there's engineered soil underneath. Um, and, and they just, it was a, they did a really nice job on it. Um, and I think if, again, if we have that ahead of time, if the planning board has that as a standard ahead of time, it's just, it becomes almost a compliance issue as, as these applications come up. So trying to develop what that sidewalk structure is, it, it can't be slippery when it's wet. Um, it's got to be, allow the, the tree to breathe. It's got to allow the tree to get water. Um, and those, those types of grates are out there.
Yeah.
So I think it's a matter of just trying to figure out what that is. And I think that is where environmental can work in conjunction with the planning board and the downtown, uh, the DSA to establish what that is. So now it becomes a compliance issue. Not only this is what tree you get, this is what you're going to have to do to your sidewalk out front.
Okay. Yeah, helps the planning in a lot of respects. So, okay. Yeah, uh, we, and as we know downtown, in this top photo, you can see the, the cones that are around what used to be a fence, um, a three foot tall fence that was a barrier. It's a bit of an obstruction. Um, the flush mounted, flush grates that are on sidewalk elevation, we think make wonderful, uh, options when done properly. And there's a lot of ways to do it properly. So what makes a tree grow best is what's below that, the space that they have to work with and, and everything. So if you're working with utilities, then you only have so much to do. So.
Well, and again, we may not have, you know, the space may not be square. It might be rectangular, left and right, uh, you know, uh, along Main Street. It may be from the curb to here. So we have to kind of anticipate what that, you know, sometimes it may go this way, sometimes it may go this way. But we have to, we have to create those plans ahead of time. So when the, when the applicant comes, it's just, it's, it's check off.
Yeah. Hopefully the utilities are known. I know that's a, that's a question oftentimes.
The sewers are not known. The water supply's not known.
It's not just reactionary to an application. It's also, something's happened. Tree got hit by a car. Tree died.
Yes.
Got to replace it. This is going to help as well.
Yeah.
Yes.
Not just reaction to an application.
Yep.
No, I think we're just saying that it's an, you know, what I'm hearing is it's an added bonus for us because we, you know, we aren't the experts. We have then now have set, it's planned. You know, oh, I want to put this tree in. Nope, sorry, this is the tree you do.
And, and the timing is good because the DSA is, is very focused on infrastructure right now.
Yeah.
So they just got a big grant.
Hundred and fifty thousand is great. That's a good start.
So, uh, I, I think, uh, if you need me to help coordinate.
Okay.
Meetings, discussions, we can make that happen.
Okay, thanks. I appreciate that. I think I'll talk briefly about what, uh, we've talked about for our short and long term. I'm not going to go through the bullet points here, but the color coding on the top right can help you identify maybe where we are in the progress. Uh, light green means we're doing, we're done. Uh, dark green in progress and orange means it's, um, something to begun, to begin. Um, so we're, we're going to, we're approaching the follow twenty-five faster than anticipated here. So all these things are, are moving along nicely. Um, it, the, uh, the DPW is going to be someone that we continue to work with well for how this is going to go. That involves the, the pruning and the trimming in particular and making sure that these trees do, uh, maintain themselves and, and have a life to live longer than, uh, as long as they can go, I should say. So, um, uh, I'll move on to the last slide. And this is our long-term plan. This was a bit to be ten years out, but it's a, a, a matter of budgeting, um, tree assessments and, and actions and things that needs to, to take place for these. So, um, who pays for these is, um, something we don't have the burden to have to provide, um, but something that is of consideration. So, um, I think the last thing I wanted to say is, is, uh, from a set of volunteers that we are to the volunteers that you are on the board, we do appreciate the time that you are spending now. Um, uh, we all have the same interest in mind in town. Ours are certainly a, a green interest in a lot of ways, but, um, you know, we'd love to work together with you as we go forward. So thanks for your time. Timmy, do you have anything else you want to add?
I don't think so.
Can you send that slideshow out?
Yes.
Yes.
You say you have it, right? So, yeah.
But yeah, it's a little bit later.
He'll distribute it to the board for us.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, without any further questions, we'll take, otherwise, we thank you for your time.
Thank you both.
Thank you so much.
Really appreciate it. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, the, this is again, just for, uh, awareness, A or B. We had one eighty-nine West Mi- Main Street came in for a sign. You guys can see it. It was already approved, but I want you guys to be able to see what's going through. Um, all right, pending, um, as well as discussion items. Uh, Mike, you want to start with ordinance two seven six one?
Just passing out the current ordinances regarding C boxes and pods or storage containers. Right now they're allowed in the residential zones temporarily and the driveways on the yards. And, uh, C boxes are prohibited on all zones for permanent storage of equipment. I think this definition, it's in, it's defined in C boxes, but it helps clarify the situation with pods. So you'll see in the ordinance, one is, uh, one seventeen, it just talks about the closing bins. The closing bins were prohibited about a decade ago, something like that. And then on one twenty, you'll get into the temporary storage containers that was pre, it was a change made, I want to say about eight years ago to allow this to address the, the temporary pods on site. And then the condition is on the next page that talks about the, um, I'm sorry, not the next page. It talks about the, uh, number three, permanent use of cargo shipping or storage containers or any manufactured device used to transport and/or store goods is prohibited. That's the idea of storing, using a C box to store on site for a permanent solution. Right now they're prohibited basically over aesthetics and there's a lot of other issues, but my God, they, these containers are rather large. So this changes, it, this is oh nine. I think some of this was amended after oh nine, two thousand and nine, but that's your current status. And, uh, just so the board knows, I'm, I think this will come up. I think there's some discussion about allowing storage containers on the borough streets. Right now the ordinance does not address that. So.
Yeah, it's, it's created a process and the ordinance was introduced at Borough Council, which regulates that now. And, um, it contemplates, you know, the property may not have access to park it on their property. So that if it does come onto the street, it has to be reviewed by the police department.
And a time limit?
Yes.
Like a defined time, six months, three months.
Uh, I don't even think it was that. Remember how long? Sixty days, ninety days, maybe.
Yeah. It shouldn't be that long because you're usually for moving or something or you're do, having work done and then you just need to get your stuff back in.
I thought it was like ten days and then you can apply for another ten days.
It might have been. I, I just, offhand, I just don't recall.
So this definition just further clarifies what's going on. I'm sure in the future we might be clarifying if on streets allowed placards complying with the, the normal things that things parked on the street would be reflectors, something you saw, uh, motors could see and sightlines. And we can certainly broach these subjects should they arise, which I think they will. But right now it's this definitions to add a definition to the ordinance.
Any questions for Mike? Thank you, Mike.
Does everybody concur? Because it's, it's.
Yeah.
This is referring from council to planning.
Yep.
So we can vote on it for final.
On, on the last page it mentions use without a building permit is not to exceed thirty days from date of delivery. So there is a.
On the existing.
On the existing. Yeah.
Are we proposing to change that to me?
No, it's, right now, just adding to the definition section of land use, what a pod, what a C box is, it just adds that. Down the road, if it comes up, there's a distinction made between these, that definition may have to be split up. But right now it's the unknown. Just get a definition.
Yeah, we just would need to define it.
Right.
Do we need to make a?
I think so, just to.
So I'll make a motion to approve or recommend to the council.
Second.
So we're going to want a motion to say that it is not substantially inconsistent with your master plan.
Correct.
Uh, based upon Mike's recommendations. He's indicated that it isn't, so.
Yeah, that wording sounds better than.
I like Jason's wording better, actually.
So do I. It's a little, much more clear.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addix.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Kraska.
Yes.
John Manilio.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Mayor Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
Yes.
Chairperson Warner.
Yes. All right, next on there we had, uh, the three, we've talked about this a little bit, redevelopment plans, master plan zoning. We will be discussing these more moving forward, um, because we do need to start getting some timelines together specifically on our master plan. It's not, master plan itself is a, is a beast and it doesn't happen overnight. So in the next few meetings, you'll start to see us starting to talk more and more about that. Um, improvement coverage subcommittee, any movement, status?
I, I, I believe we have a tentative meeting set for Tuesday.
Okay.
I haven't seen an invite yet, but speaking to Kevin, he's going to be sending something out.
Perfect. Thank you. All right, uh, EV charging stations. Mike, can you take, we do have an ordinance that is already in place. Um, we used the model ordinance, I think, from nineteen or twenty, something like that. Can we, you draft some language, bring it back to the board, um, with our safety concerns, parking garages, et cetera, et cetera.
More flexibility to address other alternatives is basically.
Correct.
Within the context of what the state allows.
Would prefer not to see.
What, what I would also suggest is maybe running this through, uh, the fire official and the board of engineers as well, so that, uh, they can have some input. They can take a look at the existing ordinance as it stands now and, uh, and, and see what they, what they can add to it or detract, take, take away from it.
And just for the record, um, through research, so D, uh, DCA, which is where the model ordinance came out as a mandate, everybody had to, uh, adopt this. Uh, in it, it does allow for us to update it, to be more strict with our own, with anything public wind or safety concerns. So that's why we're doing this. All right, and then affordable housing update?
The housing element is completed. The fair share plan, we're tweaking, working the bugs out. It'll be in front of the planning board. Uh, Colin is next month?
Yep.
So we'll be looking at that. The windshield survey is, is done, subject to some policy statements. So we're, I would say at least eighty, eighty-five percent, if, if not more, ninety percent done. Just tying it all up right now.
So planning board will get first crack at it, uh, and, and, you know, taking, uh, uh, some shots at it, pulling out what we don't think works, putting in what we do think works and, uh, and then ultimately making a referral back up to council.
Right.
And it'll all have to be done by June thirtieth.
Yes.
Correct.
So we're right on time?
We are.
Okay. Yeah. Colin's the timekeeper.
Oh, yes, he is. All right, uh, I have no extra co- other comments. I would like to open the meeting to the public. Questions, comments, anything?
We live at the Avalon and I guess maybe we missed.
Hold on a sec.
Yeah, the, Matt, Mike, there we go.
Yep, we just need your name and your address.
Hi, I'm Eric Knapp and I live at twenty-one Robeson Street, Somerville, New Jersey. Uh, I think we missed like the initial conversation that you had about the Avalon. Um, was that in the beginning of the meeting?
Uh, we reviewed their final site plan in the beginning, yes.
Did you talk about the timeline of the construction or did that not come up?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other public comments, questions? Okay, hearing none, I'll close public session. Uh, motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?